Good evening and welcome to this public forum with the candidates for the Bismarck School Board. I'm Janice Cheney with the League of Women Voters and I will be your moderator. This candidate forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Bismarck Mandan and is cosponsored by the Bismarck Tribune and Dakota Media Access. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the informed participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. There are three candidates running for election for two open seats on the Bismarck School Board. All three have joined us here tonight. They are Heidi Delorme, Rick Jelhoff, and Lawrence King. The audience here tonight, on Thursday, May 12th, is invited to submit questions on the index cards provided, and viewers and listeners may phone or text in questions for the candidates. The number to call is (355) 1312, or texts may be sent to BMLWV to 22333, as you will see on your screen. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas. Our purpose this evening is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on issues that affect the people of Bismarck. Now let's meet our candidates. You each have one minute to tell us why you are seeking election to the Bismarck School Board. Ms. Delorme?
Hello, my name is Heidi Delorme. I've been on the school board for four years. It's been a great experience and I think it's taken me four years to get comfortable with the different areas and familiar with things, so I'd like to, I'd be honored if I was elected again for another four-year term. Little background on my work history, I have 25 years' experience in accounting, financial analysts, and management, so I think that helps me a great deal with the budget and audit and other items. I have two daughters in the school system, they're both in high school, and I want, I'd really, I like being involved in the decisions that affect them and all of our students. I think it's a very important role and it's one that I take seriously and I, like I said, I would be honored to be elected again.
Thank you. Mr. Jelhoff?
Hi, my name's Rick Jelhoff. I'm running for school board because I have a vested interest in the school board, having two kids in the system and one eventually going to be in the system. And also I have the unique experience of having a wife as a teacher, which adds another layer of vested interest onto that. I think our student achievement needs to be the number-one priority, and that's why I'm running for school board, along with that vested interest. Some things about me are three kids that I mentioned, my wife is a teacher, I currently work in financial analysis and business banking, so I can help analyze those financials. I can look at them a little bit differently than anybody else, and I have a unique ability to learn and research things as needed. And so if you guys would allow me, I'd love to represent you on the Bismarck School Board.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Thank you, Janice. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, and Bismarck Tribune, and Dakota Media Access for sponsoring this. I think the more information we're able to get out to the public regarding the candidates, they can make a more informed decision, so I appreciate it. The question originally was, "Why are you running and why do you think you're qualified?" And let me just focus on why I'm running, and the reason's really the same as it was eight years ago, when I ran at that time, and that's because I've got kids in the district, and I'm a taxpayer in the district, and I'm a parent in the district, and I think that that makes me invested in this community as well. And so that's the reason I originally ran. I've got, as indicated, a 25-year-old, a 23-year-old who graduated from Century back in 2009 and '11, and then I have an eighth grader at Horizon. And being part of that process is really why I was so interested in running in the first place and continue to. Interestingly, my father and mother were both in education, as was my sister, and so while I took a different professional path, their experience in that education has really encouraged me to be part of this process, so, thanks.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the questions developed by members of the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, our in-house audience, and viewers at home. For our audience here to submit a question, please use the index cards provided. Viewers may submit questions tonight, Thursday, May 12th, by phone at (355) 1312, or by texting BMLWV to 22333. Candidates have not been given advance copies of the questions, and each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. Please do try to comply with our time restrictions so we can get to as many questions as possible. Our timer will let you know when you're down to 30 seconds, then 10 seconds, and then stop. The first question, we'll begin with Ms. Delorme, and then the first speaker to each question subsequently will rotate. And the first question has to do generally with the use of technology. Some classes are not using textbooks any longer, so there's a significant shift to digital. Legacy High School has set a new standard for programming in facilities, and that certainly includes significant digital component. And we also need to be, think about upgrading technology and classroom equipment and other amenities in existing schools. So if you would, address a little bit about the digital shift that our school district is experiencing and how we address that.
Well, there definitely is a shift. I mean, we are more into the technology age, and like you said, Legacy is really, they don't use textbook, they use Chromebooks, and they are all using that, CHS and BHS. Obviously, we are working to get that into those schools also. Equity is a very big issue for us. We know with the new schools we've opened, we have a lot of work to do at the other schools, and so we have equity issues we're working on, so getting it to BHS and CHS is a priority. At our last board meeting, we did approve architects for the middle school additions, and we're looking at a big equity piece at Century and Bismarck High, so that will be part of it, is getting technology into the high schools, and it's a big part of middle school and elementary. All kids today, it is what they need to learn, you know, it's a different world that we're in now, and so that's, I think, kind of our plan for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Jelhoff.
Obviously, technology is the way of the future, and we're moving towards that. As far as the equality, I think we need to take an inventory of what the current schools are using, and we should do that throughout the whole school system. Take an inventory, find out what the equality is like, the average, and we should bring all of the classrooms up to that average before we start looking at further enhancements. Probably a cost-benefit analysis should be done to find out where we would look at with the operating revenues and where we would spend those funds. But I think we do have to take a look at that district-wide, elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, not to leave anybody out, so that we can all utilize that technology for the better of the community.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Three quick points in relation to this. First of all, I think Rick's got a good point in relation to the inventory. In fact, last Monday, three days ago, we instructed the administration to do just that, and that was to inventory the entire district from elementary up on technology, as well as playground-to-pit equipment, music equipment, to try and have that equity-issue piece. So I think it's a good idea, and we've actually started that. Second, I've been on the board for eight years, and one of the very first things I've tried to push for was a technology replacement schedule, and we've got that in place now. What used to happen is, there wouldn't be funds one year and we would get behind, and that caused a problem in deploying that technology to the district and out to the buildings. The biggest issue is, it's not the device, it's not what type of device it is. Some districts say, "Well, if I put this device in their hands, that solves it." It's the issue of tying the curriculum and the ability to get the curriculum to the kids through that device. Dr. Kincaid, who's our technology director, has done a fantastic job with that.
Thank you. The second question, we'll start with Mr. Jelhoff. What strategies would you like to see implemented to address the teacher shortage?
I think we really need to focus on retention and make sure that our morale in the district is that, that these teachers want to stay. We have a severe problem. My wife, being a teacher in the district, I hear about it daily. The morale is down, and we need to look at ways to not only drive that morale up, but get those teachers to get other teachers to stay longer. I think one statistic I heard was the average life of a new teacher is three to five years. And recently on the school board, I saw that we had a high school teacher resign because his beliefs weren't being met by the district's curriculum. I think we need to look at all that and find out really what's driving it. I'd be in favor of a survey throughout the teachers, throughout the principals, throughout the administration, to find out, you know, what it's really like, what the board can do to help strive that further and get that retention down the line.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Yeah, there's a statewide teacher shortage in North Dakota. Luckily, as the biggest district in the state, it has not impacted Bismarck as much. We're a competitive district. I'm not saying it's not an issue, I agree it is, but it has not impacted us as much. I also am a Southwest Director for the North Dakota School Board Association, that's the association that oversees the entire state in relation to that. We have at that level taken steps to try and make sure that we get teacher recruitment and teacher, and really celebrate the profession, and get people excited and interested about it, and understanding how rewarding it is. And so from a statewide level, the North Dakota School Board Association is taking steps in that direction. I think it's a good idea, and talking about the profession, and talking it up as it should be, a very respected profession. So I think district-wide, we're in a better position than in other areas. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't address it, and we have to continue to do things to make sure that it's enticing to be here, come here, and stay here.
Thank you. Ms. Delorme?
Well, I think teaching is a very difficult job, and it's something that is very respected and should be respected, and they really have the most important role in our students' lives, so it's a very important role, and I think it's twofold. The retention of our current teachers is very important, and I think what Mr. Jelhoff said during a survey and finding out what issues there are to try to keep them happy is a great idea, and obviously, pay and benefit is a big thing, but it's also how you treat your teachers, it's very important. So I think that's a big issue, and then getting new teachers into the state is also important, which once again, like I said, pay and benefits is very important, but also just knowing it's a good school district and by word of mouth from the other teachers is very important.
Thank you. The next question, Mr. King will respond first. What strategies should the public school system execute to meet the needs of children with physical or mental disabilities?
You know, I think that we as a district do a better job of that than really any other school district in the state. We have transfers of individuals with special needs to this district because of our expertise. What we really need to do is equip our teachers and equip them with the ability to effectively do that, and I think we really try that, and I think we try to meet those needs in that fashion. The physical abilities, we have to make our buildings physically accessible. We have a couple that simply aren't physically accessible to individuals with disabilities. And so when we're looking at equity pieces, and we're talking about renovation, and indeed when we talked recently with another elementary and the closure of that, that was an aspect, and that was a part of it. And I still remember a parent who lived in that particular neighborhood, and ultimately their child couldn't attend that school because they had that disability. And so we need to make sure that we're making that as accessible as possible to all of the kids.
Thank you. Ms. Delorme?
Well, I think students with disabilities, they are definitely rising, and so it's something that we really look at as a district, and like Mr. King said, it's, I think, something we do very well, but it's very important to be, have the teachers trained and keep up with that training so that they can handle the disabled students. And being ADA accessible is a big issue, and an equity issue we're looking at, making sure all of our schools are ADA accessible, and that we are giving the same experience for all students involved, and making sure that they're getting the education that they deserve, and it takes more from our teachers, students with the disabilities, but it's very important to just keep up with the training and keep good teachers, and I think that's the biggest key to it.
Thank you. Mr. Jelhoff?
You know, this is a very difficult subject. I think there was a Tribune article recently written on this as well. You know, policies can only do so much, but we do need policies in place. Training of staff is critical in this situation, not just dealing with the situation, but working out the situation, dealing with the parents of those individuals, making sure that we're meeting all those adequate needs. Obviously, having all the facilities up to par with ADA accessibility, with proper facilities to handle the mental disabilities that individuals have is crucial. But training our staff has got to be the number-one thing to deal with, and talking to those parents on those same issues, making sure that they're both vested in the same goals, education, achievement, and making everything, ability for all to have.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start back with Ms. Delorme. And that question is from one of our callers, or from someone in the audience. What can the school district do to protect students' personal information from digital breaches?
Well, that is a very hot topic and a very important topic, because I know that is a big issue, and it is a priority for our district to keep that information confidential. There's certain information that we have to give to whoever requests it, but certain information that we don't, so I think that's just something that we continually have to work on to make sure that we're keeping confidential that data that's entrusted to us, that really should stay confidential, because as a parent myself, I understand you don't want that information getting out, so I think it's very important just to continually monitor that.
Thank you. Mr. Jelhoff?
Cybersecurity is one of the leading topics in the nation. Fortune 500 companies are worried about it, our school district should be worried about it too. One of the leading issues across the country is cybersecurity and how to deal with it. Encryption software needs to be instituted, I'm sure that we're already dealing with that, firewalls, all those sorts of things, wiping machines clean with our IT services. You know, making sure that confidential data does not leave the site in which it's intended is crucial, and you know, I would have to make sure that we're looking into that. Policies should be in place to deal with that as well.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Thank you. I was appointed by Governor Del Rumpel to the state's Educational Technology Council. One of the things that that does is it oversees data compilation and utilization on a statewide level. And one of the recent meetings that we had in Fargo, we talked about the districts, ultimately DPI may request certain data and information, and the districts have that option of providing that information. And one of the things we want to do is say, "Stop for a second. What is this data used for? What do you need that data for? Are you going to actually take that data and have some use that it can be used, turned around and given to the district to help with student achievement? And if not, let's take a pause and say, "Do you need it? And if not, should we give it to them?" So I think when you do that, you get in front of the breach, because some of the data you don't need to collect. And so we're encouraging, I encourage them, as the representative from the School Board Association, to say, "Take a hard look, because when you request that data from our district, as a district rep, I'm going to say, 'Why do you need it and what are you going to do with it?'"
Thank you. Again, we invite our in-house audience to submit questions using the index cards provided, and the, out in the, out in the community audience may call in to (355) 1312, or text BMLWV to 22333. And that will be appropriate on this date, Thursday, May 12th. So the next question, we'll start with Mr. Jelhoff, and that will be related to obesity in our schools. It's a real problem in our society, and it's a growing concern with children. What role does the school district play in promoting healthy eating and physical fitness?
That's a tough one. Obviously, we should get involved when it comes to school meal programs, making sure that we have the adequate nutrition guidelines based on the USDA, and making sure that our children are getting the essential nutrients that they need. You know, that actually goes into the breakfast program and what we offer throughout the whole school, and then the United Way gets involved with the backpack program as well. It's nice to see a community get together like that and work together on getting the kids the vitamins and nutrients that we need. The school board does need to play a role in that, in the nutrients available for the kids in the morning, during lunch programs, because some kids, that's the only meals that they get.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. King?
You know, it really is a balance, and it's ultimately a parental issue and a parental responsibility, but we have the kids for eight hours during the day, and so we have to be responsible during that timeframe. I think you have to clearly have fied and physical activity. Kids need to be active. That's how one refrains from that. Back eight years ago, when I first ran for the school board, I remember my son saying, you know, "Finally, you're going to get Powerade and all the things." And I said, "Actually, I think we're going to take all of that out," and we have. And so I think that's important, to have healthy choices for them. At the same time, you know, I don't want the federal government telling us, "This is what you have to do in relation to get reimbursements for this." And so while I respect the push of some of the federal government to have a healthy diet in relation to that, let us also have some flexibility at a local level in order to implement that. And I think our food service department is doing a fantastic job of doing that right now and having that balance, and recently we've gotten a little more flexibility, I think, in relation to how we do that.
Thank you. Ms. Delorme?
Well, we do have more federal regulation in our meals in the school, and I know, to start with, they were a little, very strict, and it was, it was an issue for some students feeling like they didn't get enough to eat, or some of the student athletes definitely not getting enough to eat. I think the key is moderation, like Mr. King said. We want to be healthier, we want to follow those guidelines, but we want to have a little flexibility and a little leeway, so we're not, if you're too strict with kids, just like at home, if you try to just feed them strictly very healthy veggies, nothing else, it's not going to work. What you need to do is have moderation, and I think we're implementing more things, a little more variety with the schools and the students, and I think that's helping, because we definitely want them to be more healthy, and I think that's a good thing, but in moderation and just monitoring it. And the physical activity is very important too, for all students to be physically active, and I think we're very good in making sure that all students have physical activity at school, because it's the diet and the physical activity both combined.
Thank you. Mr. King, we'll start with this next question, and the question is related to your opinion, your comments on the city's Renaissance Zone and tax increment financing districts. This was a question developed by our team, as well as one that has come in on the phone.
Yep, and there are two very distinct programs, and I understand there's some overlap, but there was confusion in relation to that. The TIF funding, that went up to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court has determined what the city can and can't do in relation to that, and has identified specific programs. As part of that Supreme Court decision, we got a chunk of taxpayer money back to the school district, I think it was around six or seven million dollars, which we utilized. So that's, that's one issue. The Renaissance Zone is a city issue primarily. They ask for our support, and they ask for the county's support. The Renaissance Zone is, there's two sides to this argument, and both sides, quite frankly, have good arguments, and that's why I think it showed that there was a three-to-two split vote on our school board reflecting that. I was of the belief that ultimately, when you have a thriving downtown, it helps support your entire community, and in addition, you ultimately get more tax dollars back later on. I understand some people disagree with that, and I respect that opinion, but that was certainly our decision there.
Thank you. Ms. Delorme?
Well, downtown development and developing the city, I think, is so very important to attract people and bring people in, so it's a very important program. Recently, the Renaissance Zone did come up for our vote, and I think it is a great program. It's done a lot of great things downtown. The question was, should it continue on, or should it end? And it was a very difficult decision, like Mr. King said, I mean, you heard on both sides of it, but ultimately, I heard, this is the issue I heard from the most taxpayers and the most people, and I heard very definitely that they did not want it to continue. So I did vote against it, and that's why I did, because I think as elected officials, we should vote how the public wants us to. A lot of issues, you don't, you don't hear anything, so you kind of have to vote what you think is right ultimately, but on this, this issue, it was very clear to me. So like I said, I am in favor of development, and we definitely want to do that, but we have and have to keep in mind, we need to be fiscally responsible, and keep in mind the taxpayers that are paying the taxes and that have elected us.
Thank you. Mr. Jelhoff?
I didn't get a vote on it. It's a very controversial topic. Obviously, I've done a lot of research on it. Renaissance Zone, you know, you get a five-year tax exemption with state income tax exemption as well for those same five years, and the TIF district is a separate thing, and I think a lot of people have the TIF district as a bad thing, and I'm not discounting that. The Renaissance has proved to be good for the community since 2001. Ultimately, though, the school district would lose out on that taxable value, and I think that's a detriment to our budget. I think when you look at it, but we should, we should work heavily with the city on it. We should work with the county. I don't think all those groups got into a room together and discussed this prior to getting together and having a vote on it, and I think we should have that discussion as a community, and then decide whether this is the best option for everybody involved.
Thank you. And now we'll go back to Ms. Delorme for the next question, and this came in on our, from a call or an audience member. How can the school district balance more use of technology in classrooms with recent and developing research regarding the impact of screen time on children?
Well, that is a balancing act, because as we spoke before, technology is very important, and it's very important to get that into the schools for the students, but also you want to limit that, because you don't want kids, just like at home, just watching TV or on the computer, you want them to be hands-on, get that experience. Interaction with other students is very important, so it is just important to look at every piece of that and not just say, "Let's do everything on the computer," because everything is computer-generated these days, which it is. It's important to learn all the other different interpersonal skills that they need to, the hands-on learning, not just what to do, but why you're doing it. I think that is very vital, so that's kind of the balance, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Jelhoff?
You know, I, I don't know if it's right for the board to tell the teachers how they need to teach their classroom, but I do think that it is important for reading, writing curriculum such as that, people interaction. I think when you get into the real world, you're going to run into problems where people are texting each other when they're right across the table from each other. I recently read an article about teen, you know, the schools are having problems with people having earbuds in because they're not even listening to the class anymore. You got kids with phones and everything else. I think it's a huge issue, and frankly, I don't know what the answer is, because I think we'd have to talk to those professionals, those teachers that are in the classrooms every day. We'd have to talk to the principals and those type of things to come up with the answer that's correct in this type of situation.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Yep, again, let me go back to the point that I don't think it's the device that's the answer. It's not the answer, it's not the solution. It's the method to get from here to the cloud-based curriculum, and I agree that I think it's a teacher decision, because if you have a teacher who is not comfortable with that particular technology and doesn't have the training that Rick talked about, you've got to give him that training and that ability to do that. If they do and they become comfortable, it makes it easier, and it's not simply, "Screen time, I'm going to plug this child into this screen and now I don't have to do my job." It actually increases the enhancement of the interaction between the teacher and those students, so I think that's a key part of it. You know, one other part is, we're using technology, well, let me back up. When I first started on this board, and when my daughter was in high school, I remember if she started, if her phone went off, they took it away, you know, they put it in a box at the end of the day and they gave it back to you. We've gone from there to where we can start to use our own devices and use technology in the classroom. So it's that ability to take that and actually use it in the curriculum that's the key.
Thank you. Mr. Jelhoff, you'll have the next question to start with, and I'm actually going to combine one that came from our team with one that has come in in the course of the broadcast, generally addressing issues of bullying, building safety and security, and particularly, the role of the schools in protecting our LGBT students from bullying and abuse.
You know, Centennial and several other schools in the district have started a watchdog program. It's Dads of Great Students, and it's meant to get father figures into the schools to be a vibrant person, somebody that people can go to, that I've actually been a part of in my son's school. I volunteered a couple times there, walking around the halls, being in different classrooms. And it's meant not just to be there, but to be active in those classrooms, to be, if a child needs to come to you and tell you what's going on, they can come to you. And I think that should be a program available not only to those select schools that the PTO gets them involved in, but it should be a district-wide program, and not just dads of that school, but maybe a dad from Centennial going to a school at Solheim and being a figure, if they're a prominent figure in the community, let's get them out there and visible so people are able to go to them.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Couple of quick points, because there's a lot of issues in this one. First of all, in relation to bullying, the district has to do everything it can to prevent bullying, being cyberbullying or anything else. The state passed some laws in relation to that, but we're allowed, as a district, to implement some policies to do that, and we've attempted to do it. And that goes for anyone. I don't care if you're short, tall, fat, skinny, gay, straight, white, black. Every student who comes into that building needs to feel safe and be able to do that. So that's the one aspect of it. The second aspect is the security. And quite frankly, the safety of our kids has to be, from my perspective, the number one concern we've got. And so what we've done in the last several years is remodel elementaries, because the single thing you can do for safety perspective is to make sure that everyone is funneled through an administrative area. There used to be some buildings where I could come in that door, I could literally walk partway down the hallway. We've tried to address that from a structural standpoint to create a more safe environment in relation to that. In most of the middle schools, we've also created a buzzer system, so that's been helpful.
Thank you. Ms. Delorme?
Well, as far as bullying goes, we have very strong policies against bullying, and we have, our staff is very good about monitoring it. We have text-a-bully. We have many ways to monitor it, because bullying is not something that will be tolerated. And I think there's been a large decline in it, but there still is bullying, there's cyberbullying. It's so much easier to bully people. So I'm continually asking my daughters, is there any bullying you see going on in the school? And they say there isn't. So I think the school is doing a good job of that, but I think they need to be very vigilant and keep up with that to make sure, because one of the hardest things for a kid is bullying. It is so hard to get past that and want to learn, and that's a very difficult thing. So that's something that we really don't tolerate. And safety, like Mr. King said, we made sure all of our schools have become as safe as they can be with the main entrance access into the school instead of, there were a few schools where the office was off a way, so you would go into the school and walk through the halls, and that is very unsafe. But safety is such a big issue to us, will be in the future.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. King for the next question. And this really is, in a way, a follow-up, but perhaps from a slightly different angle. How would you promote acceptance of diversity in our schools?
You know, I think, and again, I'm going to take a step back and say, you know, I believe that that's primarily a family and parental role. I really do. And so I think it's got to come from there. But I think everything that we do as a district needs to educate the kids and make them feel comfortable in themselves. And so like I said before, no matter where you come from, or what you look like, or what you believe, I think that's what we need to encourage and develop. And I think we need to do it through both role modeling, it's what we all do, I mean, from board members to teachers to janitors, to every single person, food servers, all of them. We need to model that behavior and that acceptance of that diversity. And I think once we continue to do it and talk about it, and talk out when there isn't, when somebody's not recognizing that and not appreciating that, you need to stand up to that and say, wait a minute, you know, that's not right.
Thank you. Ms. Delorme?
Well, there is a lot more diversity now with students, and I think tolerance is a big key to it, and making sure that the staff and students are all educated on tolerance for all different types, because there are so many different types of people out there. And everybody deserves a good education, and everybody deserves to be treated with respect. And it kind of goes back to the bullying policy again, where we don't tolerate bullying, and that's a big issue, that we make sure, and our staff makes sure, that students are not bullied, because we have such a diverse population of students everywhere, and it really is about respecting others, and even if they're different from you, learning that everybody deserves respect.
Thank you. Mr. Gelof?
I really do think that we need to institute a role model watchdog program throughout all the schools. I think that would help. If kids see adults acting that way, then they're going to latch on to that, because what they're taught is to go by what they see. And if they're seeing that, you know, somebody's not promoting diversity, or somebody's, you know, not acting correctly, then that's the way that they're going to act. And if we can get those people into the schools to help, to show them, I think that's where we run into, you know, we're promoting that diversity. And the school board can help that. School board can institute policies where we're doing watchdog programs throughout the whole district, and I think that's a major thing. That helps not only the school, but helps the community come together as a whole.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Delorme, and it is one that has come in. What is your position on student assessment testing?
My personal opinion on that is I think it's a good thing to assess students' abilities and to see where they are. I know that it's kind of a hot topic, that some parents have issues with it, they don't like certain parts of it, or they don't want their children to be part of that. And ultimately, the parent is the number one role in the student's life, so they have that ultimate role in the decision if they want their students to do that testing. And it's their right to opt out if they want to, and I respect that right. Most students, a lot of students are fine with taking that, and their parents are okay with taking that. I think it's a good way to measure students and their success and how they relate to other students across the board.
Thank you. Mr. Gelof?
I think there's too many assessments. I think we are assessing these kids to death, and we're not using the data. If we would use the data, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But when I hear teachers saying that we don't use that data to do anything useful, or it takes a year to get that data back, then I don't think it becomes useful at that point. I think we need to start looking at the efficiencies in this. I think we need to find out what's happening with that data. I'm okay with, you know, we need to grade students, we need to measure their proficiencies, but I think when it takes 30 minutes to assess every student in your classroom, and you're doing that one time a month, and you've got 20 kids in your classroom, that's nine hours that you're taking away from your class time.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Yep. In relation to student assessment, I agree with Rick 100%. It's use of that data. How are we going to use that? Because if you're just testing them to test them, and you're spending half the time testing, well, guess what? When they're not being tested, or when they're being tested, they're not learning. And so I think one does an inventory, and the problem is, some of it is required from federal law, some's required from DPI and state law, and some of it's district-wide. So we need to look at all of those and say, what is needed, what is necessary, and what should we keep up with in relation to it? And use that assessment, because it adds another layer on to the teachers, and adds another requirement to them, which can overburden them at the time. So I agree with that. And let me just jump back to one other comment, it was in relation to the watchdog program. I agree with that. When I was touring Centennial, I ran into some people I know, friends, that were there at that, part of that program. The other thing that does is it actually lets parents realize how hard teachers work and how much that day is. I remember talking to them at the end of it, saying, I was amazed at how much they could get done during the day.
Mr. Gelof, you'll have the first stab at the next question. And that is also from our team, as well as a call. What more should the school district do for early childhood education?
Another hot topic. Jeez. Ah, you know, I honestly, we're getting to the point now where pre-K is almost a must. You've got to enroll your kids in preschool, you're enrolling them sometimes at three years old. I do think that we should leave that up to the parents, though. I'd like to do more research on that, to answer it properly, but I do think that that should be a choice left up to the parents in order to do that, although that is the trend that this country is moving into.
Thank you. Mr. King?
You know, I think we've come a long ways, and where we started was, you know, kindergarten maybe was half-days or not, it was optional, and you've gone to this. So I think we're headed in the right direction, but I agree, there's got to be some limit in relation to it. At the same time, some kids tremendously benefit from that. I was over at the BSEP building the other day, and there's more need than the seats that we have available in relation to that. And so there's clearly a need for that early childhood education, which is above and beyond our means. And so when we're meeting with the individual from Colorado who is assessing the program in relation to that, that was one of the concerns and issues we talked about, was, you know, we have people on a waiting list to get to this program. And when you've got people who are waiting to get to it, you've got a good program that's being beneficial, and we need to do everything we can to maximize that.
Thank you. Ms. Delorme?
Well, early childhood development is such a very important thing for those parents that would like their children in those programs. Like Mr. King said, BSEP does a, they do a really good job, but we don't have enough spots for the parents that want their children into that early childhood development. And we need to find more spots for them and try to get that, because if a parent wants their child in early childhood development, we need to get them in. And that's, it's a great way to get your children ready for school, and I think it's great for the students. And I think ultimately, it's a parent's decision, but we need to make sure that we have the room for them if they want to get their children into the early childhood development.
Thank you. Unfortunately, that is all the time we have for questions. Appreciate all of your insights and answers. We will now have one minute for each of you to provide a closing statement, and we'll begin with you, Mr. King.
Thank you, Jen. Thanks again to the League for putting this on. I think it's beneficial. You know, we've addressed a lot of issues over the last eight years. We've reconfigured grade configuration, we've done boundaries, we've had a lot of buildings, we've created three new elementaries and a high school. And we are continuing to have growth. And we're having that, we're seeing that at the middle school now, and so we're trying to tackle that problem. I've really, really enjoyed the last eight years. Some people say, well, why do you do this? You know, some people get frustrated with you, they do. And you try and do the best you can in relation to that leadership issue. But I still see a need there to address that growth in the middle school and beyond, and would just be tremendously excited to have four more years in order to try and do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Delorme?
Well, I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this candidate's forum. I think it's very important for people to see the candidates and what their views are and their opinions, to make an informed decision when they vote. I've enjoyed my four years on the board. I think it's been a valuable experience, it's been a great experience, and I really think it's important work that we do that affects all of our students, and I would be honored to do it for another four years. We have a lot of issues that we're dealing with right now, with the overpopulation and the big growth we have. Like I said, expansion at the middle school and equity among all the schools. We have a lot of work to do with that and figure out how we're going to deal with all the new students coming in. And I would really be honored to serve another four years in that capacity.
Thank you. Mr. Gelof?
We touched on a lot of topics tonight, and I think they're all valuable topics. You know, the teacher shortage is definitely real, the retention sub-s shortage, the watchdog program, mental, physical disabilities. And I think it just gives, you guys putting this on gives the voters an opportunity to see all the different views and all the different candidates. So I appreciate the League of Women Voters putting this on. And, you know, if you guys give me the opportunity to serve this great community and help bridge the gap of communication, help the safety and student achievement of our kids, I would greatly appreciate it, and I'd appreciate your guys' vote on June 14.
Thank you, all of you, for being here this evening and for sharing your thoughts. I wish to also thank the Bismarck Tribune, Dakota Media Access, and the volunteers from the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. Thank you to the viewers at home and the audience members here tonight for taking the time to learn more about the candidates and issues. This program will replay several times on Government Access Cable Channel 2 and on 602 HD, and will be available for online viewing at www.freetv.org in the days leading up to the June 14 election. Before we close this candidate forum, we remind you that you will need a form of identification to vote in North Dakota. You can find identification requirements and additional voting information on the websites or at the offices of your county auditor or the North Dakota Secretary of State. Thank you all, and good night.